Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, August 26, 2013, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. The Board originally convened in open session, entered executive session, and we are now returning to open session. I invite you all to rise and join the Board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some procedural announcements before we begin our formal agenda. If you have a cellphone or some other electronic device that creates noise, we ask that you silence it or turn it off for the duration of the meeting or your time with us. If you do wish to participate in this evening's meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment. We ask that you wait to be called upon by the Chair, and when you are, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean that the public or our retorting secretary does. And we ask that you direct all comments through the Chair and not engage in conversations directly. Please refrain from private conversations here in the meeting room and immediately outside the door because it can disrupt the proceedings. And if you choose to leave before the meeting is over, please know that the meeting is not over, and please do so quietly so you don't interrupt the remainder of our proceedings. We have a speaker's policy, which we ask that you adhere to. It is at the lectern. And if you choose to record the meeting, you may do so using audio. We simply ask that you identify yourself. If you wish to record video, you need permission from the Board. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to record this meeting, either audio or video? All right. With that, we'll turn to our formal agenda. First item we have is announcements and proclamations, and we have a proclamation for Falmouth Responsible Dog Ownership Weekend. Ms. Moffett?
Okay. Proclamation: Falmouth Responsible Dog Ownership Weekend. Whereas the Cape Cod and South Shore Kennel Clubs, member clubs of the American Kennel Club, which was established to foster interest in pure breed dogs and to promote the welfare of all dogs, whereas through the addition of the AKC Canine Partners Program, the American Kennel Club now speaks for all dogs and promotes responsible dog ownership by establishing programs such as Canine Good Citizen and permanent animal identification such as tattooing and microchipping. Whereas, the American Kennel Club established AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Day on September 17th, the day of its founding, to promote all aspects of responsible dog ownership, including proper veterinarian care, safety around children, and obedience training and licensing, which are essential to a happy and healthy bond between a dog and his owner. Whereas, Governor Patrick has proclaimed September as Responsible Dog Ownership Month in the Commonwealth and the AKC member and its licensed clubs, as well as other animal organizations across the state. Host AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Days have committed to educating the public about responsible dog ownership through local events and demonstrations. Whereas, the Cape Cod Kennel Club and the South Shore Kennel Club, with permission from the AKC and in conjunction with the AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Days, will sponsor a Responsible Dog Ownership Day booth at the annual Cranberry Cluster Dog Show and Trial with educational displays and Canine Good Citizen testing. Whereas, every dog deserves a responsible, educated, and respectful owner. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Falmouth, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim September 14th and 15th, 2013, as AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Weekend in Falmouth. In witness hereof, we, Brett Putnam, Doug Jones, Kevin Murphy, Mary Pat Flynn, and Rebecca Moffett, have here to underset our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 12th day of August, 2013.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And I apologize, I neglected to note that Ms. Flynn will not be joining us this evening. She has another obligation. The next item on our agenda, we have a report from Ms. Taylor, our representative to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates, and also from Mr. Putnam, our representative to the Cape Cod Commission.
You want me first? Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. I think it's important, and I did ask to have something distributed, and I think you probably have copies of it, but I'm going to go through it because I want people at home in particular to hear it. This has to do, I am the Falmouth delegate to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates, the county's legislative body, but I want to report not on county business particularly because we're going to do that later with the commissioners, but on the Charter Review Committee, which has been established a few months ago. It's mandated that the charter be reviewed by a committee every five years. That's in the Barnstable County Charter. And the membership needs to be broad across the Cape and include people from municipal governments. The Speaker appointed himself and me to that committee because we had served last year on the Special Commission on County Governance. He didn't wait the required five years for this charter review this time because that Special Commission on County Governance had issued a report, and both the commissioners and the Assembly want some progress on that. And so the Charter Review Committee seemed like the logical place to start. And we are considering any number of things about the charter, but I'll just speak tonight about government structure, possible recommendations. The Special Committee on County Governance, at the end of its long review of county government, didn't really, I felt, put in enough time on this issue, and many of the people that were serving had a pre, they had an opinion already, and that was to eliminate both the commissioners and the Assembly and form a new, smaller group which would serve as the legislative body and would, then of course, there would also be an executive, but that would not be the same as the existing executive branch, which is the commissioners. They were suggesting seven members, five of whom would be elected from districts across the Cape, and two would be elected Cape-wide. Neither the Speaker, Ron Bergstrom, and I thought this was a very good plan for a number of reasons, but discussion was extremely limited, and in the end, I voted for the complete report, as did he. But now, we are starting from scratch on the Charter Review Commission and Committee. And that plan put forth by the Special Commission, while somewhat popular with the county commissioners, it would appear, has not gotten a lot of traction with the Charter Review Committee. The three things that we're more interested in are reviewing the pluses and minuses of the existing county structure. The model we have now is an executive branch, three commissioners, an appointed administrator, but probably that administrator right now has less power in terms of duties than the town manager system that we have in Falmouth. And then it would retain the legislative branch, which is the 15-member assembly, one from each town. They're elected in a nonpartisan manner, but because of the one-man-one-vote system, it's a weighted vote once they're in office. So Falmouth gets 15% of the vote approximately because we're a big town. Truro gets less than 1%. So this is the sort of anomaly of the existing system. But it's worked for over 20 years. The Assembly of Delegates, however, seems to want, they voted, I didn't particularly favor this, but they voted to present the concept of the same 15-member assembly, but instead of having three executives, county commissioners, we would go to five commissioners. And instead of their being elected countywide, as they are now, they would be from districts. There would still be an appointed administrator. Charter Review Committee has, having been discussing this, is suggesting a different model, which would be a legislative branch, but we haven't, we're only suggesting it to put it on the table, not to say this is our plan, which would be a 13-member Cape-wide legislative branch, but instead of being elected by towns, they would be elected from equal districts. The reason for 13 is not because it's an unlucky number, but because it looked like, if you looked at the precincts, that would end up, you could divide up the Cape into about 13. But we haven't really, that hasn't, we haven't mastered that issue. So there would be a legislative branch, 11, 13, 15 people, but it would not be elected by towns, and there would be an executive branch, but now it would be one strong executive elected, appointed, unknown. Okay. We got the three, I mean, this is three possible thoughts, plus the Special Commission's suggestion of one executive and five or seven legislators. Okay. The big question is, are, should the county legislative branch represent towns, or should it represent citizens? And the pendulum of public opinion has gone back and forth on this over the last 20 years because many people from the smaller towns have always wanted their own delegate. People in Truro or Wellfleet like having someone there, but they've also thought, well, wouldn't it be nice if we had an equal vote? But that really isn't an option legally. But we do have that option. We have one delegate from each town in something like the Cape Cod Commission, which is doing, you know, does very important things. We have that in the Cape Light Compact. We have it in CEVEC. But it can't be done for an elected legislation with the fiscal responsibilities that the Assembly has, where being different size does seem to require the weighted vote if it's town. The major advantage of having only one town vote for each delegate, we know what those advantages are. We've always organized and identified ourselves by towns on Cape Cod. It's the traditional way for over 300 years. Town boundaries are simple, predictable, and the citizens have the reassuring thought that they have someone from their own town at the table. The main disadvantage is that small towns such as Truro, or Eastham, or Province Town have no real voting power because each of their fractional vote is only a few percentages of the whole. Three or four big towns can easily control all votes. And this has often been very convenient for me as the Falmouth delegate, as a large vote. There are advantages to us. If you want to line up support on a particular issue, it's pretty clear where you need to go for that support. So this has not been a bad system for us at all, but is it the fairest system? Citizens in Eastham get to elect someone, but that delegate almost never matters on any important vote, so the individual citizen in the smaller towns is disenfranchised to a considerable extent. Another problem possibly with town-based election is that very few incumbents are ever challenged. That's something that might be more likely to happen in regional districts with more variety of opinion and experience. Should government structure enhance accountability and citizen involvement? Also, running for election with or without opposition is much more costly and time-consuming in large towns than in small towns, despite the same pay, which is modest, a difference which affects both candidates and supporters. And if we think of the example of Falmouth in the state legislature, I don't believe that we have suffered from not having our own rep instead of having the town represented by both Tim Madden and David Viera, even though their districts also include the Islands and Mashpee. The same was true when some of us had Tommy Care from Bourne and others had Eric Turkington or Eric and Marty Patrick. We turn to either or both for help, and they form natural inter-town alliances. While I think regional district elections are inherently fairer because of the drawbacks of fractional voting in the Assembly, and they might have some other advantages which I've just mentioned, I do not think the county has suffered because of the existing system. And I also think that the design of the part-time legislative branch is probably less important for the needs of the future than the composition of the executive branch. So that takes us to the next big question. Do you want a single executive or do you want a multiple-person executive? The existing county executive of three commissioners is hundreds of years old, as is really the proposal for five commissioners, which would be similar to the Boards of Selectmen that we all are familiar with. And I think strong tradition is important, but possibly it's not as important as strong leadership. The legitimate voters, which comes to every meeting of the commissioners and the Assembly, has taken a very strong position in favor of a single executive because they feel it will be more accountable and more responsible. A multiple-person executive can offer more diversity of opinion, but it definitely leads to less accountability to the voters and less leadership and possibly less effective Three or five commissioner-executive offers more paid elected positions to run for, but I see that as a disadvantage for the small county operation. The five-selectman model in a town like Falmouth, I think, is different from the way the county would be because you're operating with a legislature that only meets once or twice a year, whereas the county presumably would be operating, and needs to for a variety of reasons, especially because of the important work that they need to do in regard to Cape Cod Commission business. So I think that the comparison of five selectmen or three to five commissioners, I don't think really works well because we have such different legislative bodies. I've tried to be as candid as possible in this report about my personal opinions, but I am not wedded to any changes, and I'm serving on this committee not because I have a strong personal agenda, but rather because I have a long and strong background in the issues from serving on the original Charter Commission to subsequent charter reviews and the Special Commission most recently, in addition, of course, to being on the Assembly for many years. This experience meant I was already up to speed on the issues and how things do work. But I am very interested in elected officials and town citizens letting me know what you think, asking questions, and I can be reached at jtailler@barnstablecounty.org. My home phone is 540-0331. You can follow the Charter Review Committee meetings on video by going to the website. So please. So please, if you're interested in this, we are very eager to hear from you. If the Charter Review Commission does end up adopting a position on the governance issues I have described above, or on other issues in the charter after considerably more public meetings and discussion, it will report its recommendations to the Assembly of Delegates. The Assembly may or may not vote to place charter changes in a home rule bill for the state legislature, that if it were passed on Beacon Hill, would then result in those charter changes appearing on the November ballot in every town. So it will be going, there's going to be much more discussion at the committee level, there will be public hearings on this. The Assembly would then have to vote to put them forward. If everyone liked everything, it would be pretty much not a problem on Beacon Hill. You know, the home rule petition would get passed, but then the voters would have an additional chance to vote on it, so. Thoughts, questions?
Questions in the board?
I do have some thoughts anyways. Well, a question first of all. Does every individual town have to vote to approve that charter change?
I believe it is a Cape-wide vote.
So it's not based on-
It's not a town, that's a good question. I'm pretty sure that you have to have a majority of citizens on Cape Cod.
Okay. I'll just give you a little feedback, and I thank you for your service. I know you do a great job, and have for many, many years, and I appreciate being an elected official, knowing how much, how thankless your job can be in some days.
Interesting.
No, no problem. Falmouth has some experience in weighted votes, and giving up some weighted votes, specifically if I'm a steamship authority, to be inclusive of other communities. We gave up our weighted vote, and gave up all of our rights, and really are now at the whim of the two islands. Because what Martha's Vineyard wants, they just ask Nantucket for. What Nantucket wants, they just ask Martha's Vineyard for. And it really doesn't make much difference what the other four communities have. So having learned from some lessons in the past, I sometimes find that squeaky wheels get a voice, but they don't get, you know, get a serving at the dinner table. I also have some concerns about the spoken wheel type of syndrome. Barnstable has often considered themselves the hub of the Cape, and because of population, if it were a single executive, Falmouth being on the outskirts, I don't think would get the benefits as much as those communities within the hub, not the end of the wheel.
Are you thinking of a, excuse me, are you thinking that that executive would be elected, and that that would be the reason? Because I think that's quite up in the air as to an elected versus-
That's correct. I mean, if the executive were elected from the five-member board, like the city of Worcester has a city council, and they elect their mayor from the city councillors, in that case, you know, we'd have an opportunity to have representation. I'm a little skeptical, although I am very, much so been following the activities, and it surely doesn't appear that there's a firm direction as of this point.
Good point.
And so I just wanted to get my two cents worth in that I do like weighted votes, specifically the fact that the people in this community who I serve really deserve a voice versus those smaller communities, Hawwich and Truro. If we're going vote-to-vote, you know, I've seen that even with the chiefs of police. They get, you know, they're trying to come up with this new thing, and there's a small community further down the Cape that are driving the bus, and-
That's, excuse me, if I may, I don't consider that a risk at all. There will not be any situation of going to, everyone having, every town having an equal vote. The only change would be if you had districts like we have for state rep.
Okay.
You know, so it's pretty clear that constitutionally, with this kind of budgeting issues, we have to have the weighted vote if it's elected from each town.
Okay. And then the one last question, you mentioned November. Are you saying there would be really rushing it for this November, right?
No, 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 no. It would be on the state election in 2014.
Oh, okay, okay.
We still have to keep, if we wanted that, we'd have to go very fast, even so, because naturally it just takes forever. But, no, not this November.
Thank you, John.
If I understand, if we went with the districts, they would be divided up by population sizes, and so there would be a good chance to get it evenly divided. Falmouth might have two or three different districts, you know, pieces of Falmouth in different districts, and have two or three representatives.
Right. You can't, but when you draw these lines, you can't cross precincts.
Okay.
A precinct always has to go as a whole precinct. But we've got the Cape Cod Commission working on coming up with different maps, that could you do districts that were reasonably sized? And the last I heard was that 15 didn't work, but that 13 might. And so that's what we're looking for. If it's impossible to come up with good, really pretty equal districts, then I think that would diminish my enthusiasm for that. I certainly, if we're going to, my only reason for being interested in doing that, I'm not saying I have, want to do it, but being interested in exploring it, is I do think it is fairer in general, that every citizen's vote counts at the ballot box, and then their elected representative has, still has some power. But it's not fair if the districts aren't fair, and so-
But one district might be five towns.
Down the lower Cape, it would go at least down to Orleans.
Yep.
That's why they don't want it. They think, but then I'm giving, but I say, no, then you've got a strong voice at the table that's equal to the voice of this district and this district, everybody's equal. I would think they would like it, but they don't at the moment. They're not interested. And let's be realistic, any change probably has to go through the Assembly. So they have to be. A lot of people don't like to make any change in their organization, I will say, but it's a worth doing.
I just want to thank you, because it was information that possibly, I didn't know a lot of it, and I think just the way it was explained and you talked, it just went step by step, and I appreciate it. I think one of the things that I think when we talk about Cape Wide is the diversity of the Cape. And I think that is in the interest of each village or town as they are presenting. And I can see that diversity would have quite a bit to say, if you have five towns that would be the population of Falmouth. I understand holding that strength of Falmouth, so, thank you.
We'll be pretty well off, no matter what.
Just some thoughts that I had, and one of the things that I guess bothers me about the current structure with the commissioners, is that we have three commissioners that each are paid, I think it's $15,000. So in total, and that's just the commissioners, are getting paid almost $50,000. And yet the county budget is, and I think you put it in your report here, that the county budget's $25 million. And I look at that in comparison to, say, Falmouth's budget, where we have a budget of approximately $100 million, and the three of us all told make $15,000. We have $3,000 stipends for the five of us. And it seems to me that the commissioners are paid disproportionately more for the work that they might do. Obviously, they come from greater distances, but I guess I have a hard time reconciling the amount of money that's paid to the commissioners versus any of the other communities on the Cape, because I know, in fact, you look at Sandwich, or Bourne, or Barnstable, or Dennis, I think virtually, I think the majority of the communities on the Cape have larger budgets than the county does.
Yes.
And I think in each and every case, the boards of selectmen earn a fraction of what the commissioners do. And so I guess if, in the interest of bringing information back to the Charter Review Committee, that I think there should be some sort of equity, I guess, instituted in terms of whatever the executive branch eventually becomes, or even if it stays the same, it seems to me that there's got to be, I think, a little more fiscal responsibility, for lack of a better term, with respect to what the county-level officials get paid, when you compare them to the budgets and the responsibilities at the local level. I understand county is obviously a region versus the local communities, but even as a regional entity, it obviously doesn't have the scope of services that the towns do.
I think this is an issue also, and I guess I would, in defense, I would say, they have to run countywide, and that's difficult. And I think that, I think the Assembly voted one that's listed, where they wanted to go to the five commissioners, we didn't talk money, but I think it would be talking about having five districts. And so you wouldn't be running Cape Wide, and that would be a great advantage to the person. So then, would those be partisan? You know, the county commissioners are partisan, that's another big issue. But I am certainly not interested in spending more money, and I can, I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you.
The Assembly members are not being paid $15,000.
No, and I understand. Anyone from the public have any questions about this? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Okay, I'd love to hear from people, and please feel, I mean, this is a lot to absorb in one, you know, not even very quick, so I apologize for going on. But I think it's worth knowing, and I'd love to hear from anybody that's got some ideas.
Thank you for coming this evening. Mr. Putnam? Good evening.
I scare myself when I say that, because I know I sound like my father, especially on the phone. For the record, for the folks at home, and those in the audience who may not know, my name is Andrew Putnam. I am the current-serving representative to the Cape Cod Commission for the town of Falmouth, and I do have some updates for you since the last time was before you, the board. First thing I'll say, since the last time was before you, I have been elected secretary of the Cape Cod Commission. So I am now the current-serving secretary for fiscal year 2014, which began on July 1st of this year. So that's the first thing that changed. Second is, of course, I do want to talk to you about an overview of the services provided to Falmouth during fiscal year 2013, which commission staff just emailed to me today, so I apologize for not having these handouts to you sooner, but I will. Can these get in the line? So as you can see in the report here, it's just a basic overview of all the services that were provided to the town of Falmouth during fiscal year 2014, whether that deals with planning, whether it deals with transportation, water resources. As you can see, you go down the list, it's quite extensive. On the second page of the report, you'll notice that it lists all of the projects that were involved with the commission located here in Falmouth. Those projects, of course, were ones I had given to you in my last report, as well as you saw on the PowerPoint. Currently, there are a couple of projects that will be coming before the Cape Cod Commission that are large-scale projects, one of which is from here in Falmouth. However, due to the way we work at the commission, I cannot speak to those projects until they are completed and pass a waiting period. But I did want to distribute that report to you, so you had that, and you could see just a general overview of what the commission has done in terms of services for the town of Falmouth in fiscal year 2013. The next piece I want to talk to you about is the fertilizer management district of critical planning concern. As some of you may be aware, the Cape Cod Commission nominated the region of Cape Cod as a fertilizer management district of critical planning concern. There has been one stakeholders' meeting with the commission, and the first public hearing was held on Wednesday, August 21st. The results of that hearing was that the subcommittee, of which I am a member, decided to continue the hearing to this Thursday at 3:00 p.m., being that the subcommittee felt at the time that we did not have enough information to make a recommendation to the full commission. Just so you're aware of how that process will work, I know that Falmouth already elected to have its own fertilizer management regulations. So what we're doing on the commission with this district of critical planning concern is basically creating regulations that any town in the entire region of Cape Cod could opt into or opt out of. So it's not something that the commission is going to be handing down, sort of as law, but more of kind of a template for towns to use and to adopt if they wish to. And that, of course, is only if the full commission approves it, and then it goes to the Assembly of Delegates to be voted in as an ordinance if they approve it. The next thing, of course, is the 208 wastewater plan. I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but on Friday, a federal judge dismissed all claims but one over Cape Cod's wastewater management plans in the lawsuit filed against the EPA in 2010. I know that that's something many of us have probably been following as we deal with this issue in Falmouth. So this is good news for us, in particular, as a town, since we have made such headway on this issue. It's also good news for other local efforts in solving our wastewater problems. The second set of regional meetings in the 208 planning process are being held tonight through Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Tomorrow will be for our part of the region specifically, and it will be held at the Mashpee Public Library at 4:00 p.m., with the discussion being focused on affordability and financing. So I would encourage anyone who is available tomorrow night to show up, listen, give input. It's very important to be involved in this process, and I expect great things out of this process. The other thing to be aware of, of course, is that the commission has recently met with the town on a lot of these processes that we're putting in place with the 208 plan. What we have, of course, come to is that we're going to be focusing more specifically on watersheds that are not being addressed by Falmouth currently. So those would be shared watersheds, such as Wacoit Bay, and a couple of watersheds that are shared between the town of Falmouth and Bourne. But for those areas that we are focused on already, and things that we're already working on in terms of where to implement certain plans with wastewater solutions, the commission has decided to kind of take a step back and instead focus on those areas that Falmouth hasn't specifically worked on yet as of late, so. Also, to be aware, the regional policy plan is reaching its five-year update, so we will be in the next six months putting together the beginning processes for updating the regional policy plan. And when that does come to be, I will be back before you to discuss it, get input, and I hope that not only our citizens, but our businesses are also involved with that. That's going to be a very, very long, drawn-out process, and a very important one to be involved in. In closing, I do have a small thing to say. There have been, as of late, and I do want to preface this by saying, this is from me personally, not me speaking on behalf of the commission at this moment. As of late, there have been some emails and letters that have circulated across Cape Cod, whether they be in the Cape Cod Times, on online websites, or just thrown into people's email inboxes and kind of pushed out all over the Cape. I just want to say personally that we all have our own opinions of the political process. We all have our own opinions of how government should work, or what our government entities should be doing or should not be doing. However, I would caution all individuals who read these types of letters or see these types of emails, regardless of who wrote them or what organization or individual they came from, to always make sure that you fact-check. I can formulate an opinion, but unless I've done my homework, my facts may not be correct, and therefore my opinion is just that, it's an opinion. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of fact-checking any information that's just thrown out with- that's just thrown out with. That being said, of course, that concludes my report, and I will, of course, entertain any questions, so.
Questions from the board?
I certainly have noticed those emails, and I think that what is most interesting is that it's always anonymous. And I think that any of us that are going to take anything seriously, we put our name to it. But there's some very strong language in the negative part concerning the commission. And there's even a newspaper clip, and I looked at that. And so I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that somewhere, there's, someone needs to pay attention to that and find out just what is the source, because there is no source. There's just a lot of googly-gooms in my mind. So I'm glad you addressed that, because that would have been my question this evening, is your opinion on those.
Certainly, I'm more than happy to, so.
Okay, thank you.
Has your group voiced their opinions to the Cape Cod Commission in the formation of how the new government structure would work?
Yes, definitely. I know that Paul, our executive director, has been working with the assembly and the commissioners in this process. Specifically, ourselves as representatives to the commission have not played as big of a role as Paul has. I know that I myself have sort of taken a step back from that process. As you saw in my report, there's so much going on, you can only be in so many places at once, so. I know that some members, though, are actively watching and giving their input. And like I said, Paul is definitely keeping us in the loop, and he's most certainly voicing our opinions to the assembly, to the commissioners, and to the Charter Review Committee, so.
Great, thank you.
I'm certainly impressed with the amount of meetings and workshops that the Cape Commission runs, and I want to commend you for putting this much time and effort in for the town of Falmouth for your work in the commission.
Thank you. It's a lot more than I thought it was going to be, but I'm meeting the challenge, so.
There's an old saying, be careful what you wish for.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, questions from the public? All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Putnam.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a board discussion of our email response protocol. We had previously, and you should have in your packet, minutes from July 29, when the board last discussed this, and there was some feedback to Mr. Jones regarding the email responses. I just wanted to keep this on our radar and make sure that we follow through on this. Do we, I guess the question is, do we have the draft emails? I know Mr. Suso, according to the minutes, Mr. Suso and Mr. Jones are going to work to formulate the exact wording of the response. Is that still in progress, or?
I've actually adopted a email response that I've been using.
Okay.
And I've sent it, I think, every single time. I get an email that warrants a response of the kind we came up with. I have CC'd the board, directed and forwarded to the town manager, and then things have moved forward from them. Again, the email response is not for individual emails, those we can still deal with however we want. One way is to email it to the entire board, at which point I will send out the general response. Or the other one is to respond to the emails on your own, if you feel like it. But it is a very, I am not using this for, as Mr. Putnam mentioned, emails that come in anonymously, or, and I'm making some judgment on whether they warrant a response or not. If they're just informing us of information, as opposed to asking for some kind of service, then I'm happy to get the information, but I don't have a response for that one.
The board satisfied with this?
I've seen the general response that you've generated back, and I think it's excellent. It just lets folks know that it did go into an endless pool.
Right.
And that it was read by somebody, and then it was moved up or to the appropriate party.
I do want to commend the town manager for then getting to it and getting it to other people quite efficiently.
I think I need to be added to the list.
Okay.
They're not coming through.
Okay.
So maybe then, that might be something that the town manager's office could check, because you should be included on the, there's the general address to selectmen@falmouthmass.us. So any emails that go to that address or responses to that address should be received by all of us.
I'll have a check on that.
Thank you.
There was one question that we talked about, and that question was, there's very often emails from folks who are not voters, taxpayers, or residents. I don't know if we ever actually came to a conclusion whether we were going to respond to those emails.
I thought the direction was, if it was a constituent, they should get a response, otherwise.
Right, okay, that's fine with me.
They wouldn't get the formal one, they might get a individual one saying.
Okay.
Something else. I do not feel that from nonconstituent, it needs to be sent up the ladder.
Okay, that's fine. I wholeheartedly agree, I just didn't know if we came up with a policy.
Okay. So the board then satisfied with our progress on that, and we can move on?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good. All right, next item on our agenda. We had previously talked about the question of the agenda item, entertained questions from the public and press, and during our retreat, we had, there was general agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we should probably have a discussion about this. As the board knows, it's something that I added to the agenda as chair. It's something that, as noted a few years back, the board had started to adopt this practice, entertaining questions from the public and press, that it was not meant to be an open-mic night, if you will, but simply an opportunity for individuals to ask questions from the board, or to have the press ask clarifying questions of the board. But obviously, there was some concern by members of this board that it might be a bit of a free-for-all, so. Before we put this back on the agenda, or even if we do it at all, I guess we'll open the floor up to some discussion and see how we want to proceed.
Although the job is not glamorous, and although the pay increase is not that exorbitant, the chairman typically handles those type of questions from folks, on whether, and the chairman also sets the agenda. And I think that most of those questions would be best served to be funneled through the chairman, as well as the fact that there was some practice at some points in time years ago about taking those general questions. I'm not talking about a question from the press, I'm talking about from the public, but the open-meeting law has drastically changed, as we all know it. And I don't believe it's fair to folks on another side of an issue, when someone comes forward, asks a question, and that the board makes some direction that night. Of course, the charter is very clear, we set policy and procedure. It's a way to circumvent the process, coming forward, asking a question, that doesn't go through the normal chain of command, meaning go to the chairman to see whether it rises to the occasion to be able to be put on a board of selectmen's agenda, number one. Number two, it not only puts the board, but specifically the town manager's office, in a position to answer questions or be directed to answer questions at a public meeting. And I don't think that the charter personally provides for that. We're a policymaking board, and I think that that's an opportunity that we should take serious and make sure that we set policy. And again, I guess this could be part of a procedure, but there have been times that in past, I'll use one example, when the wind turbines were curtailed at a meeting that was not on an agenda because it was a question that was asked. And there are some folks on both sides of that issue that felt very strongly about it. But when you start taking questions and answers from the board, I mean, from the general audience, and those questions morph into statements, I think that it's outside the realm and the dignity of what this board is designed to do. And I think that, first of all, this job is hard enough as it is. We're subject to scrutiny, not only day-to-day, but in the press, in everything we do in our lives, because we volunteer, or we take a job that has a stipend to try to serve this community. And I've gone to other communities and seen how people get up and do a rant and rave, and then formulate it like Jeopardy! at the end in the form of a question. And quite candidly, I don't think it's fair to the folks that serve here on this board to be able to do that. I think it's appropriate for the chairman to make a decision whether something rises to come to the board as a discussion. But that's my two cents, I'm one of five.
Well, I feel that the way we've been running the meetings, if an issue's on the agenda, certainly the public has a right to ask a question at that time, and they're given every opportunity to. I would be concerned about questions coming up, that I haven't had a chance to do the background research and know what the topic is, and then be put on the spot to formulate an answer where I haven't had a chance to do the homework that our agenda allows us to. And so I do think there are many, many ways that the public can get questions onto their agenda, the way of communicating with you or with our staff, to get a question out there, that they don't need to have an open mic to be able to do so. And so I would hope that we would stick with really keeping it open during the meetings when an issue comes up. If they have a question, they should ask it at that time. If the press has a question, they can ask it at that time. Or they ask for it to be an agenda item, if there's a bigger issue that they want further discussion, so that we really can know what we're talking about, as opposed to the spur of the moment.
I take it a little from both of you. I think one thing about the position that we have is not to be concerned about what is being said when you're not prepared. And I think the other thing about this board is we need to have decorum. And I'm not really sure, there can always be decorum when it's an open mic. Open mic has a connotation of all goes, and that I would be very concerned about at a selectmen's meeting. So I think that as far as our business, the seriousness of our business, the seriousness of decisions, we know from the agenda, and we prepare ourselves, and we come in. And it shouldn't be that we could be challenged. Many things could be said to us, and many things are said to us. So I go with the part of, we're prepared when we come to a meeting, we're prepared for any questions that come, and I would like to continue instead of having open-mic time.
All right. I guess the one feedback that I would offer to the board is that the situation regarding the curtailment of the turbines was not the result of any sort of an open-mic or open-question situation. It was, probably could best be described as an unanticipated agenda item that was sort of forced by a group of angry citizens, who, I think rightly so, had concerns that they felt were not being addressed, and so they, and to their credit, they waited very patiently for the end of the agenda, and then asked to be heard. And the board at that time, and in fact, I was chair at that time, and I'll acknowledge that, I made the decision to allow them to be heard. And it was one of those moments where, as Mr. Murphy says, sometimes the chair exercises some discretion. But it was not part of any sort of open-mic or any anticipated questions, and in fact, at the time, we didn't have anything on the agenda that said entertaining questions from the public, or anything that said that we had an open mic. So that was a unique situation, and perhaps not a good comparison to what we're asking here. But certainly, the idea behind this is not to make the board uncomfortable, and I understand where Mr. Murphy's coming from with respect to the Jeopardy! style questions. And we saw that a few weeks ago, when we first had this on the agenda, and we had a few people who tried to ask the Jeopardy! style questions. But I hear where the board is coming from, and I certainly won't press this any further, so we won't put this on the agenda. But I would caution the board as well, that this does set, it does set a certain tone for the public, that when we allow the public to come in and ask questions, and you may be right, it may, there are certainly other avenues for the public to ask questions of the board, other ways of getting feedback from the public. But having this item on the agenda does provide, in my opinion at least, and if nothing else, a certain appearance of openness. And sometimes perception is greater than reality. And the board's willingness to entertain questions from the public, or, in this case, it sounds like not entertain questions from the public, does affect the public's perception of how this board does business. So I think that's something worth considering.
I just want to make one thing quite clear, and you're framing it, that there's a perception that this board is not open, and that is the farthest thing from my mind. However, the charter is very clear what we do. There are very many committees in this community that rightfully so, those volunteers in those committees are very, take a lot of ownership to their committee. And they want to fight for that committee in that particular group, whatever it might be, whether it be beaches, waterways, or whatever it might be. Having the opportunity not to go through the proper channels, meaning the town manager's office, we don't set the day-to-day operations. And to be able to, you know, field a question from somebody or somebody in an open setting is not fair to anybody, meaning because it's not fair to the person asking the question, because they have certain expectations when they ask that question. And we cannot fulfill those expectations on a whim, and going through the chair or going through any one of us. Now, I've got to say this, Mr. Chairman, you never, when you've served in a leadership position on this board, have ever shunned an issue that I've asked to be put on an agenda, and I tried to do the same thing. But those come from the board. I will say that there are many, there were many times that folks asked for something to be on an agenda item, but it was inappropriate, because this board had no control over those agenda items. That's with the day-to-day operation of the town. There was one last week that came forward, it was about a parking issue, just wanted to come before the Board of Selectmen, and that's not the appropriate venue. It needs to go through the appropriate venue, then ultimately maybe come to the board. But I think that's the appropriate way. You've always been open as a chair to listen to the other members of the board if someone has a constituency issue, and we bring it forward to you. I know that you'd entertain it if you thought it was appropriate. So I want folks to think and know that we'll discuss the issues that concern them, but some of those issues we cannot help them with. Someone calls and asks me to fix a parking ticket, I can't do that. Someone calls and wants me to get them into a beach, I can't do that. And there are certain expectations folks need to know. And I think that this board is working well together, and we're going to want to be able to keep it that way.
And we are. Point's well taken. All right, liaison assignments. Again, this is one of the things that we discussed during our retreat, and I've been a little tardy, if you will, in getting this on the agenda, in part because the general discussion that we had was one of rethinking the whole liaison process for the board. So I think tonight's discussion is more of a preface to, one of the things that we talked about was having an actual workshop on how we deal with, how we oversee the committees, commissions, boards that we appoint, and how we work with them. So rather than go into any detail this evening about liaison assignments, I guess one of the questions that I want to, or one of the things that I think that the board should discuss this evening is, do we want to start moving ahead with perhaps organizing a workshop and discussing how we're going to oversee committees? And do we want to continue with the liaison program, even, do we want to do it temporarily? Or do we want to simply say that at this point, we're not going to move forward with it in anticipation of, say, a restructuring of how we work with the committees we appoint?
Can I make one suggestion? I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. We have something that Mr. Bragg had, you know, in our agenda packet, had long talked about as like a little handbook for committees. And I think that, quite candidly, we probably need to develop that handbook and make sure that this board can adopt something, and then be able to say, we're going to take it to these committees, and say, this is our expectations. We appreciate you, your volunteerism, we appreciate you working for this community, we appreciate you volunteering for a specific group in this- we appreciate you volunteering for a specific group in this community. But just like there's expectations of the Board of Selectmen, there's got to be some expectations of the committees. Civility, things of that nature. So, I think this is a great beginning start point, but liaisons, I think we all, even though we might not be assigned to a committee, anything that's of interest to each, any one of us, follows that a little bit. It might be better if, yeah, we do have, you know, part of the handbook probably should be that the committee sends us, whoever the liaison is, sends us a copy of the minutes. So, at least we know, a little overview of what's going on. But that would be my thought process, to try to develop the handbook before we get back into the committee thing. Doug had a great idea last year, starting to merge some of these committees together a little bit.
Well, and actually, if you look at, I mean, we have a few agenda items here, and some of the, this certain, each of them is a little bit discreet, so I just wanted to start with the liaison assignments, because obviously, there's a, I think right now, because of past practice and history, there's a certain expectation, certainly by some of the committees that we appoint, that they have a member of the board assigned as a liaison to them. And we saw some of this, for example, a few weeks ago with the Veterans Council. So, the question then, you know, again, we have in years past had members of the board serve as liaisons to specific committees. And this is from the last year that you're looking at here. The question is, do we want to, do we want to have these liaison assignments again this year, or do we want to take a step back from that and begin this process of looking at how we manage the governance of the committees?
The first thing I would say is, there's not enough of us to take care of all these committees. And I mean, you would, I went through and just kind of marked the ones that I would have a personal interest in. And then I looked at, they meet on the first and third Thursday, so I thought, well, there's two more weeks. Then you add that. So eventually, I filled up a calendar, and I had four committees I was looking at. So, I thought about that, and there's just not enough of us to do, unless you just went every other month or however you wanted to be selective on what you were doing. But I think, I really do think that the selectmen need to have a continuous connection to all of these committees in some way. And if that word liaison is what is going to do it, then that's a pretty strong word, because there's so many, and there's so few of us. And it is definitely a time commitment, but when I figured this out and looked at these meetings and where they are.
Well, and you all have a copy of the policy. The anticipation in years past, and certainly as we look at this, is not necessarily that you have to attend every single meeting, but simply to have a connection, say, in your case, if you were liaison to a specific committee, that you would go to the chair of that committee, and if they had any concerns or issues, if they needed to be on the agenda for a reason, if they were looking for some information from the Board of Selectmen, that would be the interaction. Not necessarily that you have to show up to every meeting, or that you have to participate in everything that they're doing. In fact, the policy actually, we've very clearly laid out that we don't want to have too much meddling, I guess, for lack of a better term, that there have been years past where members of this board have been aggressively participating in some committees as though they were even a member of the committee. And this is more or less a contact between this board and our committees to maintain communications. So, there's not an expectation that we have to attend every meeting, although certainly attending a meeting on occasion helps us maintain that communication and get a feeling for what the committee is doing.
And it's important to note that we're not there to be their advocate.
Right.
We're there just to know what's going on, because that, again, an expectation, you're our liaison, we want you to advocate for this, and that's, we can't, it's not right, because we're not individuals, we're a five-member body.
What I would feel comfortable is if the assignment were, each one of us had six or seven committees, that if they wanted a selectman to come to that meeting for a particular reason, they would have one of us to invite. But if it's coming back here, they need to go through the chair. It's not through the liaison to come back to the board. That if they have an issue they want to bring to the board, they send their chairman to our chairman to arrange it to be on them. And that we don't report back to the board what's going on in the committees, but we do provide the information to the boards, to the committees, if they need it from us.
Right.
Because I think every time we try to, no matter how hard we try, if we report what's going on with the committee, it sounds like we are advocating for them. And it's very hard not to.
I agree. And most of the stuff they speak to us for, about, really needs to go through staff.
Right.
I mean, in other words, talking to us about something, a budgetary item, is not the appropriate chain of command. It should be, you know, the chairman of that committee meeting with the town manager, assistant town manager, to be able to ask, because...
Well, I've been a liaison to a lot of committees, and I do know the rules, and it's best that you follow the rules. But I think it's also good for this group to know what is going on in the meetings as it would go through the chair and then come onto the agenda. Every one of these chairman here should at some point come in front of it.
Well, you know, and I guess the best scenario was chairman last year. I had some of the other committees, but one of them, which during the budgetary aspect, was speaking with the school committee. And you and I sat, and you were the chairman of the school committee, and I had a cup of coffee, and we both at least understood where each group was coming from. And that type of liaison, that's good. Maybe we could just reiterate the assignments and go the way Doug's talking about, at least, for now, and then we can continue to refine it. We don't want to leave folks out there in limbo in the middle.
Right. Which is why I wanted to try to address this sooner than later, because obviously, with the budget process coming up and the other issues that we have to address, like the wind turbines, it may be a few months before we have that workshop where we start talking about the governance and the oversight of the committees and the commissions.
Yeah, I think our, the policy could stand to be reworked, but not needed to be worked. And I think we could continue with the way it is written right now and proceed.
Maybe we could send the chairman the list of the committees that would like to, like to be on, and then you could develop that. I know that in our policy, you take, you take a lot of committees based off of the chairmanship.
Right.
So, a lot of the ones, you might want to keep a few of the ones you still had, but it'll be up to you. So, I know Selectman Braga, the ones I had last year will no longer be appropriate. Selectman Braga had some, so there's some of those I'd like, you know, to be interested in. So, maybe we could just send you a list, and you could, how about we prioritize the list as we go down that list?
It would certainly help, and one of the things we did last year was to, we received feedback in terms of first, second, and third choices, so that, and according to the policy, it is done according to seniority. So, if there's a more senior member of the board who would like to be liaison to a particular committee, that they're going to have that assignment over a less senior member of the board. And as you noted, Mr. Murphy, the chair generally serves as liaison to the elected bodies in town, such as school board, finance committee, and so on.
Thinking about charter.
Yeah, I think that was in the charter, right?
It may be.
But we adopted it in our policy, too.
All right. So then, we'll proceed with the liaison assignments.
So, we'll send you an email, is it?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. All right. So, joint meetings, in years past, well, first I should preface this by saying that we have, within the charter, and you all should have a copy of the charter, the charter actually identifies specific committees, and I'm looking for that section in here. There are specific committees identified in the charter that are appointed by the board, and more importantly, we are obligated, according to the charter, to meet with these committees on an annual basis. One of the challenges, I think, that the board has had in years past is that oftentimes, and this is on page, let's see, it's section C, Appointed Town Boards, Article 7, Section C. And in here, it does specifically note that we need to meet with them on an annual basis. In years past, oftentimes, we've satisfied, sometimes we haven't met with them, is one of the challenges that we've had. The other thing is that sometimes we've satisfied, if you will, the requirement that we meet with these boards, committees, commissions, by asking for them to present a report to us. The problem with that is that oftentimes, we're given a written report, which is read verbatim, and then there's really not a lot of exchange between the board and the committee, in that we hear the report, we thank them for their service, and everybody parts ways for another year. It really doesn't actually accomplish much. We had scheduled earlier this year a meeting with the Conservation Commission under similar circumstances, and I reached out to the chair of the commission, and I have it as an action item to get back in touch with the chair of the Conservation Commission, because we did exchange some emails, and it was general agreement that we probably should have a joint meeting, where both boards sit down together, and it's advertised as such, because they have certain concerns and issues that they'd like to discuss with us. And certainly, we may have some guidance or some action items that we could ask of them. And so, the idea here being that we actually have a meeting, and not simply get a report that's read verbatim, as well that we can walk away from these meetings with action items, so that we actually accomplish something in the process. And as you'll see in here, the boards include the Board of Assessors, the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Council on Aging, Historical Commission, Recreation Committee, Waterways Committee, Beach Committee, Human Services Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Historical District Commission. And all of these bodies, they are, submit a written report to or meet with the Board of Selectmen at least once a year. And that's under item C72BC. So, rather than just hear a verbatim report, what I'm proposing is that we'll start scheduling joint meetings with these boards, and actually see about accomplishing something.
Question to you, though, I mean, there's still quite a few of those.
There are.
And I know we had talked about some workshops, and quite candidly, I don't know, I mean, we were talking about some other issues, and I know you're planning some kind of other retreat. I mean, we've got one, two, three, four.
There's a good dozen.
If it's 12, and that would be 12 meetings, and we had talked about doing workshops, I don't know if all of these would be considered as relevant workshop. Some of them, I mean, some of, it does say a written report or meet with the Board of Selectmen. So, maybe the board can decide how we're going to move forward, maybe on an every other year basis, because some of these groups have some issues that they might want to talk to us about, others might just want to give us a written report, or, I'm looking here for the boards group, because, I mean, I don't want to just sit here every night, with all due respect, and we have a lot of other pressing business moving forward. We have not only things like wind, but we have an ESCO program that's coming out, things that are really going to be important for this board to educate the public on. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here with this group, this, all these committees, but maybe we need to pick and choose or prioritize. Conservation's a good one, I mean...
And I would even add, you might want to add, in the school committee, library trustees, planning board, and the housing authority.
Now you're up to 16.
Yeah, so...
If you're a priority, I might put some of them higher.
Right. Oh, yeah. I mean...
Well, this is the feedback I'm looking to get from the board.
I think it's just being flexible. I think that if you look at each one of these, and there certainly is a seriousness in each one, but I think as you would look at the dates and setting up the agenda, is to have the flexibility of either written or a meeting with the two, because it doesn't need to be the same for every single group.
Agreed. And for example, the Board of Assessors, I don't know that there's going to be anything significant that we need to sit down and meet with the Board of Assessors about, but to use the example we've already discussed, the Conservation Commission, there are issues of staffing and coordination and so on, that may be where we would warrant an actual joint meeting with them. I don't think that we would necessarily need to reserve an entire evening for these. Certainly, if we have an established agenda, that we have action items that we want to discuss and try to come to some decisions on, that we could put it together in such a way that we might spend an hour on, with a joint meeting with one of these committees, and then we can do other business that evening, or maybe we have a couple of joint meetings in an evening. One of the things we did a few years back, when we had, for example, a workshop, we satisfied the requirement to meet or hear a report from several of these groups, Waterways, Beach Committee, Conservation Commission, were all included in a workshop, where we talked about the issues of coastal ponds and coastal issues. So, there may be opportunities here to have workshops where we incorporate a larger meeting with several of these committees at once. But again, I wanted to get a feel from this board as to where we stood with some of these ideas, and also, if you had feedback for workshops, which meetings might be more important to us than others, that sort of thing.
One thing I'll agree with you wholeheartedly is, I don't want to have them write a written report that they read to us. If they're going to do a written report, that suffices, they don't need to come, unless we want to hear something else.
Okay.
And you know what, a lot of times, we need to ask people what they want to do. So, maybe, now, keep in mind, we didn't even address the planning board, which is a requirement, I believe, twice a year.
Twice a year, yes.
So, maybe we need to start out by writing all these committees a letter, saying, first of all, would like a written report, and/or would you like, do you have an issue that you would like to talk about, that you think would be important to sit down with the Board of Selectmen, or would you just merely like to submit a written report? I mean, this year. Not come and report, but an issue that you'd like to discuss. So then, maybe we could start out that way to find out whether there's somebody there. You know, looking at the Board of Health, I mean, it's an issue, there's some issues there that, you know, that they're taking up at the same time we're taking up. So maybe, you know, water filtration, one of the issues, wind, another issue. So that it might be appropriate, as we move down the line, to put a couple items like that together, and prioritize that with everybody together. So, I think...
So, and to follow through on that, maybe we can ask staff to send a general email or letter to the various chairs of these committees, ask them for that kind of feedback, but also from all of you, if there's any of these boards, committees, commissions that you think we should have a meeting with, and what the issues we need to discuss with them would be, then we can also provide that feedback to them as well, so that we can determine if there's, because if there's interest, for example, on our part to meet with them, but maybe they didn't have any necessary interest to meet with us, we might still want to have that meeting to address whatever concerns that we might have. And for example, one of the things that comes off, right off the top of my head, is we've talked in the past about combining the Historical Commission and the Historic Districts Commission. So perhaps a meeting with those three, with those two committees, or those two commissions, rather, to start talking about the process of how we're going to organize that, or how they might, you know, address whatever concerns they might have, that sort of thing.
And we might be able to add the planning board at the same night, because the planning staff works with those two groups.
Exactly.
And...
So that might actually be a workshop.
Right. We get three, three done, yeah.
If we're going to send out that email, there are three other committees I would add to it, one is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, who's not on our list here, and the Community Preservation Committee, I think it would be good to have a meeting with them. And the third one was, I guess, the Town Building Committee.
Okay.
We're going to be busy with them.
Okay. And we will do that. And that brings us to, as discussed previously, the committee handbook. I do have, I don't want to hand this out to everyone, a couple of years ago, this started and then it sort of stopped, and as, I have an email here from a few years back, one for each of you. A couple of extras for the file. here from a few years back, one for each of you, a couple of extras for the file. A few years back, a draft, and I believe that the draft that we have here that was submitted to all of you in your packet is the most current draft that was provided to a few committees. The board had decided to send a draft out, and we did get feedback from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and these are the comments that they had provided to us, and this was, again, you can see it was a little more than two years ago. At this point, I guess the question is, if we incorporate this feedback and then resubmit it, would we, do we want to submit it to all the boards that report to us at this point? Do we want to say that we're going to submit this first draft and ask the boards to provide feedback, and, but at the same time, say that this is the committee handbook, and we're going to expect everyone to adhere to it, and if there are concerns and you think there should be feedback, please present it to the board so we can compile it for another revision.
I would rather speed up the process and incorporate the suggestions of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and really move forward saying, this is our committee handbook for the next year, and try it, and use it pretty much the way it's written, and then if in a year from now we need to review it because issues have arisen that we weren't expecting, but we've already, we've been working on this for years, we've sent it out to the committees, even though the committees are different right now, to send it back for more and more drafts. I think it risks just not getting done.
And I wholeheartedly agree with you. I will say a couple of issues, though, that we've got to make, I mean, like, our speaker policy. We developed a policy, but I think we all intended that policy to be adopted by all the committees, and things like that added to it. But the other part of the deal is that, you know, learning curve, we'll get some feedback after a year, do we make some adjustments? But I think that we want these committees to adopt the policies that we set as their appointing authority, and then even have each and every one of them sign off that I've received this, I agreed to abide by the committee handbook issued by the appointing authority. I mean, in other words, you sign off on it, but we want everyone to be singing out of the same hymnal here.
Because I, you know, on the conduct or how they're supposed to behave and the speaker's policy, what's in here is very close to what our policy is, and I'm not sure we need to, I mean, it's covering it very, very closely in the intent, and even if it isn't word for word what we've written, I could, I would still be comfortable with, you know, what kind of things you're allowed to, you're allowed to behave.
So Mr. Murphy brings up an important point, that there is no sort of, there's nothing in here for an acknowledgement, and perhaps that is something that we can ask Town Council to add to the committee handbook, is an acknowledgement page, if you will. And it's not uncommon, or I think out of, out of the scope of what we're doing here, because certainly the state, and some of you may recall that when the state's new open meeting law went into effect, we were asked to fill out, to actually go through a process of answering questions and filling out an acknowledgement form that, yes, we've taken the test, we've read the materials, and we understand the open meeting law. So it's not outside the scope of what we're doing here, perhaps, to say, okay, here's the committee handbook, this is the behaviors, the policies, the procedures that are expected of each and every member of every committee, and we want an acknowledgement that you've read it and that you are willing to adhere to it. So.
One question, and I don't know the answer to this question, but conduct of members who violate this, there is, it really isn't addressed in this.
That was one of the.
Yeah, and that was one of the things.
Yeah, right, I'm just questioning that.
Do, well, do we.
I think there is a, there is a page concerning conduct.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
Removal for cause.
Removal for cause, or, like, a letter of reprimand, or, I don't know whether we want to adopt that at first. I mean.
Do, well, do we want to take these comments? I'm not sure what happened with these comments, but we have them, we can certainly submit them, ask Town Council to provide some feedback on them in terms of can we incorporate something? The three, three suggestions that were made, one of them is the open meeting law's summary should be appendices so that the committee handbook does not need to be updated each time, so, rather than as they are now, they're incorporated as part of the body, but if they're in a separate appendix, then every time the law is updated, you just revise the appendix. The second comment was there should be a procedure for the board to appoint unpaid members as special municipal employees for reasons of liability, and certainly Town Council can put together something in this, I think that's been done in the past. And of course, to Mr. Murphy's point here, the third comment was that there should be a removal process and procedure in this handbook. And in fact, the board has been bitten in the past for not having a formal process for removing someone for cause, so perhaps we could ask Town Council to establish a process for us so we can put it in here.
And even the open meeting law scenario, we may want everyone to take the test. The same test that the Board of Selectment, in other words, that you take it on the computer and go through that.
Well, they, if they have to, okay.
They do, okay. We might want to, we might want to put it in the handbook, though.
Okay. Well, and if there was a final page in here anyway, which actually identified and said, yes, I've read the contents of this, and I adhere, I agree to adhere to all of its, all of the information herein, that in essence, they're doing that as well.
Okay.
So it sounds like maybe submit the feedback that we got to Town Council, try to get some, something back, and press ahead with this as quickly as possible, is that what I'm hearing?
Doug, I think that's a great idea, let's get it out there, and then if we need to come back in a year and tweak, we surely can do that based on feedback.
That's good.
Okay, so maybe within, I don't know if it's possible, we can check the Town Council if we can get something back in two weeks, and we can get it on the agenda and try to get this distributed to the committees as quickly as possible. All right, let's see, policy discussion, there was, I don't have a copy of it in the packet, there was an email policy. Do we have, you don't have any copy, do you?
This is, I wasn't sure what you were talking about tonight with email policy, so I have something for you two.
Okay, thank you.
I can talk about it quickly.
If you wouldn't mind.
We had started this process a couple of years ago, and back with our former Personnel Director, Town Council, and the Information Technology Director, we're working on a, we're working on a computer usage and email policy. This is the email policy portion of that, and I offer it to the board for review and consideration. It makes sense, but it isn't complete, but they've done a pretty good job.
And I wanted to have this for the board's review because there's also, there have been other things, obviously, in recent months regarding the use of social media in town employees, and there was actually some suggestions made to the board many months ago about the use of social media by the town in general. And for example, I know the town of Barnstable uses Twitter, and although it doesn't at first glance sound like something that the town could use, if you're familiar with Twitter, it's a process where whoever has a Twitter account, you can post messages to the Twitter account, where that might be of value to the town and certainly to the general public is that anybody can subscribe to such an account. And so if the town were to establish a Twitter account, one of the things that might come out of that is that during a winter storm, for example, messages could be sent out notifying people that a particular road is closed, or that services are available at the high school as an emergency shelter, those sorts of things. It's an opt-in program where we wouldn't have to do, for example, a reverse 911 call to everybody. People could subscribe to the Twitter account that the town publishes and get up to dates about what's going on with the town. For example, a meeting was canceled because of bad weather, or because there was a lack of a quorum, and this way we can keep people informed. But before we establish a Twitter account or any sort of other social media, we might want to expand upon, whether it's email policy or an online digital policy of sorts, to make sure that we've established our basis here. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of this, and that perhaps we set the stage for a larger discussion later on regarding social media, how the town addresses it, and perhaps establishes a policy as to how it may be used.
Has this policy been adopted?
No, and we also are working on a social media policy, which our Personnel Director has drafted. I didn't realize that's what you would be talking about, otherwise I'd have brought that along.
Well, and again, overview here, so.
Okay.
So I think at some point in the near future, we'll want to adopt this, we'll want to see about having a social media policy that can be adopted, and also, like I said, perhaps even consider the town establishing a formal social media presence in order to inform the public about what's going on. Because of course, we have the website, but it's, the website is static, if you will. Somebody has to go to the website in order to get information, whereas if they subscribe to a Twitter feed, then they will automatically get messages when they're posted.
The only thing is that you have to be very careful, and it would stymie part of this, is who is authorized to send out information.
And that's where a policy would be necessary.
Right. If you get the wrong person who's sending, you know, just, we've seen that in the press so, so many times.
Yeah, exactly.
I think the issue about the Twitter is to think about the, possibly the age of our residents. And I think that your example of a storm, and maybe, you know, a road is closed, or the examples you were using, that I'd say there's a good percentage of our residents that would not be on Twitter to find that out. And that's, that's just one thought of, you want that message to go through, so a reverse 911 seems to work as it goes into homes, and not, not all homes have a home phone, as they would have a cellphone. So if they don't have Twitter, and they have a cellphone, though, I mean, there's, so those are all things to think about. It's the person who is to receive the message, and what system do they use? And then I'd go from there.
You bring up a good point, because so many homes now don't have a landline.
No, they don't.
So reverse 911 does no longer really work, so you need to go multiple methods of communication.
I think so. I don't think it's just one, I think it's.
Remember also that a lot of phones these days are these so-called smartphones, where on here, you can subscribe to Facebook or Twitter feed, and so, to your point, not everybody has a landline, and, but there are a lot of people who have the so-called smartphones and may have a Twitter account, or may be able to establish a Twitter account and subscribe to a feed that the town provides, so.
I just, I guess my point is, is not to get locked into one system.
Agreed.
When we think about the residents.
Any other discussion about this? The Capitol Advisory Committee, we obviously, this was presented to the board earlier this year, and one of the things that we're going to need to do is make some decisions in the near future about how we want to proceed with the recommendations. You all should have a copy of the report in your packet, it's the minutes from the meeting. If you need a copy of the report as it was submitted earlier this year, I'm sure we can dig that out and make sure everybody gets it. Very briefly, there were the recommendations regarding parking fees, establishing meters, again, in the Main Street area, making some adjustments to the permits for parking and the waste management facility, rental inspections for short-term home rentals, vacation rentals, if you will, that don't fall under the existing bed and breakfast, hotel motel room taxes. The question of whether we want to expand the room tax, at this point, we do charge a 4% room tax, and the state has allowed us to increase that to 6% if we wanted to. The issue of renting town offices. Marine fees were significant, there were a few recommendations there regarding renting of unused moorings, and changes to the slip fees at the town marina. Surplus property, although that may be an ongoing issue that we don't necessarily have to address right now. Alarm registration, establishing an annual alarm registration. Water rates, we talked about that, although that's, again, something that may be more for future discussion as opposed to action that needs to be taken now. But some of these things, for example, the idea of renting unused moorings in any given year, the Harbor Master had indicated that it would probably take about a year to establish a pilot program to determine the viability of that. So if the board is comfortable, what I'd like to do is start scheduling some agenda items in the coming months to bring in, for example, the Harbor Master to explain how a mooring rental program might work, and get permission from the board, whether we want to approve a pilot program to see how that's going to work. If we wanted to bring parking meters back to Main Street, we would probably want to have a public discussion about that, and consider issuing an RFP or an RFQ to have a vendor, see what a vendor might be able to do for us as opposed to having the town invest the time or money in meters and equipment and so on, so.
Is there any reason we couldn't go ahead and proceed with that RFQ right away? I mean, that's, that's the first piece of information I need to know. I mean, you get the public input also, but really, what would it look like to have a private vendor take it over for us, and what kind of finances could we get? On the Capitol, on the Capitol Advisory Committee, we came up with some very rough numbers, but I would really want to know much more detailed as to what it would look like, how often would you be putting up those booths, what kind of income could we get?
I think part of that, and perhaps Town Manager's Office could provide some background, I think if we're going to issue an RFQ or an RFP, we have to have some very, we have to have some specifics in order for that document to be presented. Perhaps you can elaborate.
The only thought that I have is you might be able to interview a firm or request an expression of interest rather than a full RFQ. Most of these firms will be able to scan the area, look at it, know what applications they put in there, and to give you their, you know, sweetheart feel of what, what they might produce. So that, that might be more of a workshop kind of a thing rather than a formal RFQ. As a first step.
There is a lot, there are a lot of these that are fee-based, and maybe what we need to do is ask the Town Manager's Office to develop entry-level fees for these, and so that they'll be prepared for our fee hearing process. So in other words, we can get through the warrant and the recommendations, but typically fee hearings are late November, December, for January, so at least those, that portion of those could be brought, I'm trying to pick and choose groups out of this to bring them forward, and then we can maybe get some estimates of what they would generate. Of course, none of these probably will generate anything for this fiscal year.
Right.
So, and it will be a large and public discussion about the parking scenario. Trust me, for someone who is in a village that has parking fees, it is a very large discussion, so we'd probably need to start that sooner versus later.
Right.
And then the question is, to the size, is it just Main Street, or is it peripheral? Does, how far back does it go? The town owns lots, things of that nature.
And certainly, Mr. Jones can attest to the fact that the recommendations that are in here are based on literally putting a meter in every town-owned space in the Main Street area with the exception of the school. So the numbers, the estimated revenue here is based on a very large portion of, including, for example, Town Hall Square, the lot behind Pig Noon and Park, those areas as well, so. But again, those are estimates, and of course, if we decided that we didn't want to do all of those areas, or that we wanted to do a little here or a little there, that it would change numbers, which is why bringing somebody in to try to provide some feedback would be a good idea.
A couple of questions. Why did we take the parking meters down? What was that when that happened? That we removed all of them?
I've heard various stories, I don't know if anybody here can offer some.
I just wondered what, I mean, because the traffic could not be any worse on Main Street. I just wondered what, I mean, because the traffic could not be any worse on Main Street.
It was the redevelopment, I think, is the best way.
Redevelopment, okay. Maybe it didn't go with the new lights that were there, or something, I don't know. Maybe there was a look they were, they were thinking about. But whatever the reason was why they took them down, is to think about the reason of why you would reinstall them, so. So that would be one of my, one of my thoughts. What I really have a thought about as far as revenue is concerned, and the number of people coming into Falmouth seems to increase and increase, and, and I think we're really bursting at the seams right now, but our beaches. And if you are a, if you're going to come in to the town of Falmouth, and beaches are one of the things you want to utilize, you do not want to carry your umbrella and your beach chair either on your plane, or wherever it is. I mean, you want to come with just your baggage. So I think there should be some kind of a thought about having beach chairs and umbrellas, and whatever else the tourists would like, on each one of our beaches that they're a rental system.
Just FYI, when, when the beach concessions are awarded?
Yes.
They can sell or rent anything they would like to those beach concessions. I mean, the beach concession, because years past, when I was not a swan, when I looked at it, if you win the concession at Old Silver Beach, you can sell beach toys, you can rent beach toys, you can rent beach chairs, you can rent umbrellas. But again, it's a supply and demand, and the area of the town's not in the business to do that. The concessionaire has the option to do it, but no one has chosen to do it.
Okay. Why isn't the town in the business? That's my point. That's exactly my point.
Capital. Same thing with this one.
Okay. All right. Because I do think that there is an area that is not being touched, because I do not believe our tourists are coming in with all the equipment they need to go to the beach, and I think the town could get in the business. And if there's a reason they can't, they just kind of explain that to me. And then as far as the parking meters, I really would like to hear everything about that, because I like the way it goes right now without the parking meters, but if there's an incentive of a greater revenue, I definitely want to listen to that, that part of it. But that was, as I went through each one of these, I was just thinking of, it's the beaches and the revenue that we're not getting.
All right. So we'll be looking to schedule some of those things in the coming months, and the, the fees especially. As Mr. Murphy noted, we'll get some recommendations to, to start working on those.
Well, and also, if the room tax is, you're saying it's at 4% now, and 6% is available, is another place to look.
It is.
Okay.
All right. And that brings us to the minutes. Minutes of August 12, 2013, public session.
I move approval of the minutes of August 12, 2013.
Is it the public session?
Public session, yep.
Public session. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No. Okay. Unanimous. And then we have executive sessions, this is divided. We have, let's see, we have the executive session regarding wind turbine litigation. This is also for August 12.
I move approval of the wind turbine legal discussion, executive session and not release.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented and not release. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And then discussion regarding land acquisition, the Chute property, this was also executive session.
I think we, can we release this?
Was it, I think that's why we had separated it, was it not?
I don't think there's anything left in it that...
We could always take it up at the next meeting to determine if we could release it.
Yes, that can be released.
It can be released, okay.
I move approval of minutes and vote to release minutes of the executive session on the land acquisition dealing with the Chute property.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Chute property executive session and to release to the general public. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, and the summary of actions. If anyone would like to hold any of these for discussion?
Oh.
We have item number one, donation to the beach department, donation account, Old Silver Beach Estates Homeowners Association to be used for beach screening. Number two, conservation restriction amendment, Friends of the Cove, Ten Point Road, North Falmouth. Number three, USDHA, DHS FEMA Emergency Management Performance Grant application. Number four, authorization to pursue participation in State Energy Conservation Bonds Program. This is the ESCO that was discussed. Number five, request for special event, Fair Winds Sea to Shining Sea Walk on October 5, 2013.
Hold.
Hold that one. Request for special event, number six, West Falmouth Village Day.
I'd like to hold just so they can make their presentation.
Okay. This is October 13, 2013. Number seven, request for a special event, Rupper Ducky Race, Old Silver Beach, September 7, 2013. Number eight, request for use of Surf Drive Beach Parking Lot for Wedding Reception, September 7, 2013.
Hold.
Hold that. Number nine, request for a beach wedding, Surf Drive Beach, Old Silver, Surf Drive Beach Silver?
That's the name of the family.
Oh, okay, excuse me. I'm thinking Old Silver Beach.
But I thought that was actually, I thought that was actually, I thought it wasn't Surf Drive.
It's a different name.
Okay.
So it's not a silver name.
Okay, well...
I thought it was Casino Beach.
We'll hold. Do you want to hold it then?
Yes.
Okay. And number 10, authorization for Herring Brook Water Quality Monitoring Contract. So I have holds on five, six, eight, and nine.
I see, number 11.
I'm sorry? Oh, there's a number 11. I apologize, my agenda's a little, so number 11, we have adopt and sign an order of taking for lot 90, Bernard St. Jean Drive, and this is from Article 1, April 3, 2012, special town meeting.
I move approval of one, two, three, four, seven, 10, and 11.
Second.
Motion and second to approve items one, two, three, four, seven, 10, and 11. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And Ms. Moffett, you held number five.
Um, yes, I, let me find my paperwork. Is there anyone here on, on the Shining Sea Walk? I have to find that.
This is for Fair Winds.
I, um, just personally, the reason I am holding this, I was hoping someone here could answer the question. I think that we need to, we need to keep straight, how many different organizations are using what part of Falmouth, and I think as far as our bike path, that has become so popular, and I just am always concerned about the inconvenience to the residents that use that bike path on a regular basis. So I looked at it one more time, and I know that Fair Winds has done this, and I know that that is a fundraiser. I just wish there had been someone here that could kind of explain to me the inconvenience to our people, but if there isn't, we'll just move on then.
All right. Well, how would we like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve item number five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
I just add my discussion.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And, let's see, Mr. Jones, you held number six.
I just, I'd like to hear what's going on at West Falmouth Park.
Okay.
I know that there's a poster, a sign, give a little advertisement for the event that's happening.
Sandra Cooney, Chairman of the Falmouth Recreation Committee, and also a Board of Directors member of Falmouth Together We Can Incorporated. I just want to tell you, on July 10, Jake Barry and Sue Moran came before the Recreation Committee. They presented us with an update on Phase 2 of the West Falmouth Playground Project, which is under the umbrella of Falmouth Together We Can Incorporated. They also at that time asked permission to use Swift Park for a special event on October 13 that you have before you. The Recreation Committee was unanimously in support of Phase 2 and of the use of the playground, whereas all the proceeds will be going towards Phase 2 of this. Unfortunately, Jake Barry could not be here tonight, because Mother Sue is here on his behalf to give you a quick update on Phase 2, because you did request that we come before you again, in which you can answer any questions, and hopefully we can any that you have. As far as the funding, I'm just happy to say that since a freshman, Jake Barry, freshman in high school, has raised $33,505 towards this project. He has, from a generous donation, a matching grant coming. Phase 1 is completed, as you know, last year, so this is all going towards Phase 2, which it appears that his dream and his goal of designing and creating this new playground for all of Falmouth youth to enjoy will become a reality by the time he graduates a senior in high school, so it's very, very impressive. The Recreation Committee and the Board members of Together We Can hope that the Board of Selectmen will continue to support this project, and I'm going to ask Sue Moran to come up here and just give you a quick briefing, please. Thank you, Sandy. I have just a little picture that I think you might need, so I think you've probably all seen it before, but...
Hi, I'm Sue Moran. I am the President of the West Falmouth Village Association, and as Sandy very eloquently said, I'm pitch-hitting for Jake Barry on completion of the West Falmouth Playground. And I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update. A couple of years ago, Maury and Art Carlo Hawks of the Village Cafe, Annulindas, wistfully recalled the old-fashioned fare they enjoyed at West Falmouth's Playground when they were children. Last year, the West Falmouth Village Association made it happen with Jake Barry kicking off the event with a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new slide, swings, and handicapped accessible picnic table, after he raised at that point $15,000 through Together We Can. Around 150 families enjoyed the field games, face painting, nail art, Kevin Pease tennis, Pine Street Pickers, Fieldcrest pony rides, and displays from local businesses. It was, as Jay Savala put it, quote, "a genuine pleasure watching the kids scamper about what parents, village elders, enjoy their time together." We're hoping for an equally successful event this year. Recently, Martha Ross had a conversation with West Falmouth's Larry Fish. Turns out that among his many accomplishments and interests, Larry has built playgrounds. Larry simply said to Jake, "Shouldn't be taking you so long to finish this project." As Sandy said, you probably all remember about three years ago when Jake first came to you with this idea, and he's appreciated your support ever since. "How about I put a spark into it and offer a matching gift," said Larry. As an outsider to the conversation, I will say that Larry's extension of his hand across a generation was effortless. He not only validated the hundreds of hours of Jake's efforts, but also challenged him to think bigger. Sandy Cooney just told you the successful results of that challenge so far, and we are still fundraising, and the entire village is really responding very generous, genuously. We plan to install the playhouse that you see right here, the Omni Spinner, a bench that was donated by West Falmouth United Methodist Church, and the Pinnacle climber. On Jake's behalf, I want to thank Together We Can, the West Falmouth Village Association, Falmouth Recreation Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, as well as the many folks all over Falmouth, including West Falmouth and Falmouth generally, who have supported his efforts in rebuilding the playground, which was originally made through the efforts of volunteer firefighters on land donated by the Swift family. I'd like to invite all of you to West Falmouth Day, and to help raise money for the completion of the playground on Sunday, October 13, from 10 to 2, which is the day after Born Farm's Pumpkin Day. The rain date will be October 14, and it would be a pleasure if as many of the Selectmen here would be able to, you know, just join us and have fun with the festivities. So thank you all for your support.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Yes.
Explain to me about this fundraising. What, what is it? It is just different people are giving a certain amount of money, businesses are doing this, or is there a product people have? How are they fundraising?
This is a grassroots effort that's sort of like a school project for a 16-year-old who's now going to be 18 in a month and going to college. It's been everything from presenting to the Board of Selectmen, grant writing, it's been organizing fundraisers with, with members of the Falmouth Cross Country and, and track team. It has been U-Lindas and the West Falmouth Market putting a can out. This has been an opportunity for a young man who had an idea to ask people in the village and in the town, "How would you like this to happen?" And the West Falmouth Library, for example, had, they have just had events, or it, it's just really been every possible way to fund raising. The Village Association, we did a survey, and Jake basically did a solicitation which said, "We've, we've had, you know, this, these events, this is where we are with the fundraising, would you like to give to finish it?" And when Larry heard about it, he said he'd like to be a, a part of it and do a, an end-run, big splashing matching gift, so we're very proud of all his efforts, and we appreciate all of the input from all of the organizations that have pitched in, all the people, all the grandmothers, all the kids, just, it's been every type of fundraising, and it's worked terrifically.
I wanted you to say that on, on, on our TV. I just, I asked that question, and you just did beautifully.
It was, it was a good thought, I appreciate it.
I just think that there's a lot of people that need to know, how does this happen? Because this is so fantastic for the children to have, so...
And it's a lesson.
That was my, my kind of behind idea.
Absolutely. It's, it's the, what he, what Jake's learned is you can do it, and, and through the support of Together We Can and, and the town.
Okay. And is there any difficulty at all with the number of cars that park in the area that are going to come on October 13?
We did great last year with asking a lot of people to bike, and we had basically people just directing, where good, people in the town have offered their lots and that kind of thing, so we, through the experience of last year, I can see that we had a plan that worked, and we'll probably do the exact same thing.
And the reason for that question is I went to McQuaid to their fair this weekend, and it, the parking was really quite difficult on Route 28 and everywhere behind the church, and, and I was just thinking about what happens in, in West Falmouth, so, so that was, but thank you very much. And it was the reason I wanted to hold it, to hear all that, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You've sat there for a long time. Thank you.
I move approval of the special event, West Falmouth Village Day, October 13, October 13, 2013.
Second.
Exactly.
Okay, motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Moffett, you held number eight.
Yes, on number eight is, I'm concerned about that parking, and I think there was a note from Mr. Hoffman that said if it was a nice day, they may have to park somewhere else. I'm going through my...
They might have to park at the Mill Road lot, but they, another way, they've done that before, so if you...
Okay.
So you make a motion to include those comments on the permit, maybe?
Uh, yes, I'm just concerned about how many cars are going to be at this wedding reception, and how much space there is going to be for them.
But the wedding reception, I mean, their issue is, they may arrive and not have parking. It's unlikely that they will take parking away from beachgoers, because it's a evening wedding. Isn't it at 4:30?
Right, I believe.
Yeah, 4:00 PM is the...
So at that point, when they're coming in, we're not going to have more people coming to the beach, but they may be stuck and saying, "Hey, there's no room for us," and say, "Well, you're going to have to go down to Mill Road and park at that lot."
Okay, and then you were saying, "As the wedding guests will have to go down to Mill Road, not our residents." Okay. All right. That, that was my reason for holding that.
So make a motion to approve with the, the beach superintendent's comments on the permit, meaning that they may have to park at Mill Road?
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And Ms. Moffett, you held number nine.
And on number nine, I was holding, I was thinking that this was at the Heights Beach, the one is, that is behind the casino. And on number nine, I was holding, I was thinking that this was at the Heights Beach, the one is, that is behind the casino?
Well, actually, I've got a note here in the file that, in fact, and it's even from Mr. Hoffner, he said, "I did not realize that this marriage was taking place on private property."
And that's what I wanted to discuss. The area behind the casino is considered as private property when you're, when you're there at the town beach?
But they're not at the town beach.
I mean, they're at Falmouth Heights Beach, excuse me.
Right, but Falmouth Heights Beach is distinct and separate from the, the beach that fronts the casino property.
They own that beach.
The casino owns the beach, and therefore, there's really no action for us to take on this because it's on private property, so they didn't even need to come to us for this.
Okay, that was the reason I held, I was concerned about that area. And also their parking, they didn't have an issue with the parking?
Nope, no issues with parking.
Okay, all right. And the name is not Silver if you read. I know it was very difficult to read that application because that handwriting was atrocious.
Always a school teacher, I love it.
I'm going to do a public announcement in just about five minutes.
All right, and that addresses the summary of actions, do we have any reports from the individual members of the board?
I just want to report that I will have a meeting with Mr. Mustafa tomorrow to go over the proposed policy for appointments to the Veterans Council. I received a draft from the Town Council, and we're going to discuss how that fits with the needs of the veterans.
Okay. Anyone else?
It, it's not a Selectmen's report, but I, I noticed we do have a calendar and a, and a packet, and I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if, if we're going to discuss at some point, you know, block out meetings as we move forward for the rest of the year, as we did, either for not having meetings or having meetings, so that-
Well, we can, looking forward to September, obviously, Monday, the 2nd is a holiday. And as you noted in the calendar, there are dates blocked out here already, the weekend of the 22nd through the 25th, or that, that early part of the week, is the ICMA Conference. And I know there are members of the board that choose to attend that, so we may not have a meeting that week.
We should solidify whether we are doing that strategic planning workshop on the 14th.
But I could make a comment on that, I, I have a wedding that day, but I can make it until 11:00 AM. I have a noon wedding that day, so if we could do something like 8 to 11, that, that would be fine with me.
It has been confirmed, we have the same facilitator returning at, at the same location.
8 to 11 from 14.
That's, that's my question to the chairman, but-
Can we?
I think that's your call. It's normally 8 to 1, but I think that's-
If we have to, well, we'll have a, an aggressive agenda, let's put it like that, we'll try to wrap it up early then. Unless we-
That's great.
Unless there's insistence, we could try rescheduling if we wanted.
I think we're better off doing that and being, we're going on our time.
All right. So noted, so as far as dates go here, the, we would, we're anticipating a meeting on the 9th, which would be two weeks from today. We have to vote the articles and execute the warrant by the 16th. And then we also have article recommendations that need to be voted either on the 30th or on the 7th of October. It may be that we have three meetings in September.
So are you proposing that we would not meet on the 23rd? That's, that's kind of what-
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so we'll cross that out.
That we not meet on Labor Day, obviously, and we would not meet on the 23rd either. And as well, we, with three Mondays available in September, we could schedule a workshop for one of those and start aggressively pursuing those. October, the only thing here we have concrete is the 7th, where if we do not get the recommendations completed, on the 30th of September, we would want to have them done by the 7th of October. Columbus Day is obviously a holiday.
Can I have a question, just for Heather?
Any chance that we'll have information that we be able to do turbine discussion by the 9th, or do you think that that's-
That is our current goal.
So we may already be having almost a workshop?
Something of a workshop, yeah, okay. Good to know. That's a good question, thank you. So October the 7th and the 21st, whether we meet on the 28th, I think will depend upon whether we have a workshop that day. Or have a workshop on one of the other days and conduct business on the 28th. And then I don't know if you want to look as far as November, but the 11th is Veterans Day, and the 12th is Town Meeting, so we will not be having a formal meeting that week, other than our pre-Town Meeting, meeting as we usually do.
I'm sorry, I missed, did you make any, draw any conclusions on the 28th?
We did not at this time.
But likely meeting.
How about the 4th?
Well, if we didn't meet the 28th, we would likely meet the 4th, and, and in fact, we would want to, probably in preparation for any Town Meeting. Even with the, the meeting that we have prior to the start of Town Meeting, there may be other business that we need to take care of.
Okay.
So there's the 4th and the 18th in November, and of course, the holiday week, we'd probably take the 25th off unless there's an objection.
Okay.
And that would put us to Monday, December 2nd. And if we were to skip the 9th, as we have, we would meet on the 16th. The 23rd is a, it's a holiday week with Christmas. And so we might skip the 23rd and the 30th because of the holidays.
Okay, I know we do have, in our Selectmen's policy, that we have the week of the meeting between Christmas and New Year, so 30th, yeah, okay. The 23rd, 30th, okay.
Great. So the only thing that might change is we've got the, September, we have three potential meetings, the 9th, the 16th, and the 30th. And then with December, there's the potential of meeting on the 9th, we, definitely the 2nd and the 16th. But if we have additional business or a workshop, we could do that on the 9th.
Do we still have the meeting on the 14th, Saturday?
Yes.
8 to 11?
Well, we're scheduled for 8 to 1, but as-
Do we go 8 to 1 and dismiss you at 11?
But that's, I, I-
We'll try to work through the- I think we'll try to work aggressively and see if we can't get out by 11. All right, any other updates from the individual members of the board? Ms. Moffett?
I did go to the McCooyet Fair, and I did think that there was quite an issue as far as the parking was concerned. And I did give a, a certificate to Paul Rifkin as the Citizen of the Year from McCooyet, and that was presented, and Mr. Viero was there to present from the state. And if there's information that comes from here, maybe a proclamation will come, come from us. I also went to investigate the erosion over, off Maravista Road and along, on there. And I'm not really sure where I was supposed to look. I mean, the information came in, there was a serious problem. So I think it's up to Mr. McContry to go over and take a look and see what that issue is. But it seemed as if the cars are getting ready to go into the, over the cliff, so. That communication came from Cheryl Williams, who is the President of the T-Ticket Improvement, so I thought I'd go in and see. That's it.
And we have Mr. Suso's report. His absence this evening, if anyone has any questions, I think you could reach out to him, unless-
There's a couple of points I just want to draw your attention to. It's chock full of information, just a couple of items. We do expect to have a draft, a listing of sample projects for an internal review in September of the ESCO project. And we wanted to make sure that if a Board of Member is interested in participating in that, that you let us know, and we'll make sure you're included in the scheduling of that session. We do expect the Cape Cod Commission Report on the Spring Bars Road Project also completed in the month of September. And we'd expect a formal presentation of the Commission at a joint meeting of the Planning Board, working with the Chairman to schedule that.
Any questions?
Great, very productive meeting.
Does there any correspondence that we wish to discuss? Hearing none? Motion to adjourn?
Salute.
I'll take that as a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at 539-9500.